Good.
Good. Okay. Call this work session to order. Our topic today is to talk about the 2022 slash 23 audit. And do you want us to introduce our guest, or should I here?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you guys have all probably met Mr. Rick Prue before. Comes to us from Kern Thompson. He's been the auditor here for a few years.
Yeah.
Over twenty years.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, without further ado, I mean, I will, before he gets started, I need to give he and his protege Calvin some serious thank yous and kudos because this, we would not be where we're at today without those two. So my hats off to them and the patience that they had for me and my team holding, so.
Oh, thanks very much, Jen and Zach. We really appreciate working with you. Spencer, again, I'm Rick Prue with Kern Thompson, and we performed the financial statement audit for the year end in June 30, 2023, fiscal year 2223. And we've got our reports here to go over. I'll go over some highlights with you. Just to let you know that they've already been submitted to the state, you know, and we were able to, they're normally due by the end of December. We were able to get an extension and they approved the extension. And we've submitted those reports already on behalf of the city. So, and so basically the audit's all wrapped up for the year. The, there's two components to the report. We also do, you know, the audit of the Seaside Urban Renewal Agency, and which is already blended into the city, but then we provide a separate report for that. Just kind of in a nutshell, so what we've, after completing our audit, we've rendered opinions that are called unqualified, unmodified opinions. So what that means in layman's terms is it's a clean, a clean opinion. So we don't have a discrepancy or a limited scope or a qualification in the report that would cause us to have to, you know, you'd be out of compliance or something like that. We also do testing on what's called Oregon Minimum Standard. There's some compliance requirements you need to order that we test and render a report on that. And that report's also in here also. And it explains what those requirements are, things like depositive funds, budgeting, your debt limitation, compliance with taxation and things like that. So we test these things and render an opinion specifically on that. And that also has a clean opinion and compliance with Oregon Minimum Standards. The third component of it is what's called government auditing standards. So in addition to the auditing standards that all CPAs follow in America, there's something called General Government Auditing Standards. And they, those are specific also to government compliance. The nice thing about that is it ties in with the Oregon Minimum Standards. So the same types of things we would look at, we kind of do at the same time, but it's a separate report we render on that. It's not a study of internal control, but we look at considering internal control and we basically render an opinion, okay, are you in compliance with controls over, over compliance? And, and the city, we found that to be so also. So the three main components of the audit report all contain what we would call a clean opinion, a, you know, a good, good report card. The other component of the audit, which is what I typically go over first, we call it the audit letters or the governance letter. So it's a report specifically to you, the city council, as those in charge of governance, including, of course, Spencer and Zach as the management, but you're in charge of governance. And it's basically in writing our communication to say, how did the audit go? That, you know, we have certain responsibilities and management has responsibilities. Responsible for the form and content of the financial statements and we're responsible for auditing that and testing it and rendering an opinion, which we were able to do. And there's certain things, there's certain, we would report, are there new standards that were required to follow during the year? While there's some new standards that came out, they didn't really apply to the city. One would be, there's a new leasing standard. While you basically buy and own all your property, you may lease a copier or something like that, but those are relatively trivial in the grand scheme of things. So those kind of things didn't apply for you. The other things, there's, there's always an element of estimates in any kind of financial statements, whether it's a governmental, a nonprofit, or a for-profit enterprise. And the estimates are things like depreciation, how long are the useful lives of your assets you have? So how long do we spread out the cost of that, you know, to match up with the use of that? Estimates of, you do, you have receivables, you have customers, essentially the city residents who rely on the, on the water and sewer usage. And so they pay for that. And so you have, you bill them and collect that, you know, are they all collectible? So there's an estimation of what the value of that is. And, and so it's, those kind of things are in the statements. We look at that as part of the audit. Those are probably the main things we look at, as well as, again, compliance, are you following your budgets? Are you, you know, pretty much sticking close to the budget? Are you following? If you have a change in the budget, do you consider it and vote on it? And we typically do. So all in all, the audit, you know, it went really well. It just took a long time to do. When we got a changeover of the guard, you know, there's changes and there's a learning curve. And Zach, you know, he gave us a lot of credit, but you know, a lot of credit goes to Zach and Spencer for, you know, kind of figuring out, okay, how does, how do all these moving pieces work? And there's a lot of moving pieces for the city of Seaside, as you know. You have a convention center, you collect room taxes, you have real poverty taxes, you collect fees from the residents for water and sewer, and you get other, other sources of revenue that you have to account for, for various uses like public safety, the fire, police, your community development, and all those things that you have funds set up for. So those types of things are what we look at. The other part of it is, okay, now we get down to, in the financial statements, are there things that we have to, do we, do we encounter any difficulties with management? Always happy to say, no, we had no difficulties with management. And did we have any, what we call misstatements where we had to, you know, we had to suggest a correction to, you know, how something was recorded or not? And so there were some things that we did correct. There were some entries that we gave management as part of what we call a non-atest assistance. For example, trying to figure out, keeping track of the depreciation, we help with that. But we make sure that it's their estimates as far as what the lives are and they approve what we're doing and take responsibility for that. That's an accounting assistance versus if there's, we see an error or something that should be classified differently for the financial statements, we'll make that adjustment. So there were some adjustments that we made and because some of them were larger ones and they had to do more with, okay, you have all these different funds, you've got some transfers that were made or that maybe should have been made. There was a bond issue at the beginning of the fiscal year that repaid, that paid off some old bonds and then give you some new money for some new bonds. And the, just, it's, the money was spent in the right spot. It was put into the right use. It's just how it got from one fund to another and paying it off. There was a big adjustment we proposed for that. So because of that, we have a, what we call a, we call it a finding that we call a material weakness in internal control. And that, that sounds, you know, pretty strong. Okay, a material weakness. The only reason it's, it's considered that is because it's a large number of adjustment that we made between funds. And it kind of gets blended a little bit in the financial statements. But it, you know, at the end of the day, they're still in balance. So I don't want you to get, you know, too worried about the material weaknesses, is the city going to go under or something like that? That's, that's not the case at all. It's just because we had to propose an adjustment, we're required to say there's a material finding here. And that, those are the things that we put in the report. They could probably, they got copies of this, yeah? Okay, so you've seen the list of the tiny adjustments we made. And, and as we go forward, you know, we made suggestions for how to, okay, watch for these things. And, as Zach said, so I, I think all in all, it was really a good experience and a good, you know, a good first year, really. So going forward, I wouldn't expect that we'll have something like this. Well, if there's other adjustments that I didn't put in here, again, as I said, that relate to what we call accounting assistance. One of the other big estimates, if you will, is your pension plan. So you have the standard that basically handles the pensions for the, all the city employees. Under Oregon law, you're allowed to opt out of the public retirement system and you have your own, which is fine. It provides the same kind of benefits and level of benefits. So you have to rely on the standard. And as auditors, we rely on the standard's actuaries to calculate this. And there's a whole set of rules with, okay, how are things supposed to be calculated? And what's this big liability supposed to be based on how much, as a city, you've put in for the benefit of your employees? So it holds so much in assets, and there's a separate fund, a fiduciary fund that shows what those assets consist of. And then there's a liability, the liability is basically the net difference between what they project you're going to pay the employees that are working now, that have retired, and how long they might live. And it's, it's a big guess. And a big guess is a big estimate. And that's probably the biggest estimate in these financial statements. The, the thing to kind of keep in mind, as I tell most of my clients, is that this big liability, while it exists, okay, it goes way out into the future. It's not a check you have to write right now. And, and maybe that's simplifying it a little bit, but it's, you know, it shouldn't be something that can keep you up at night. There are, there's a lot of assets there to cover what's, what's coming up immediately. As long as the city's operating, you're going to generate revenue to be able to provide for this going forward. So those are, those are the kind of things that are in this governance letter. But all in all, the audit did go, go well. It just, it just took a little longer this year, so. The audit report, as you've seen, you know, it's, it gets pretty thick because under Oregon requirements, every fund has to have its own separate statement of a comparing the budget to what actually happened in that fund. So there's thirty, twenty-seven, there's-
Forty-something.
Forty-something funds. And so for every fund, there's, that's, that's most of the thought it is. Is there's, there's a page for each one of these that has, okay, the original budget, if you made adjustments to the budget, what the actual was and what the variance was. And then that's supposed to all tie back to, for that fund type, so you have general funds, you have special revenue funds, you have debt service funds, you have capital project funds, and you have enterprise funds. And so all those groupings of funds, within them, there's multiple funds that we have one of these statements for that we balance to. When we do our audit testing, because it's all under the same system, we, we select a group of transactions that hopefully cover most of the major funds. And if we haven't covered them, we do some additional testing. But we test things, the receipts and dispersments, so the sources of revenue coming in. We test the dispersment, so your expenditure is going out. To see, are they going into the right fund? Are they going in to the right bucket inside the fund? Are they going into the right period? In other words, do they belong in this year, or next year, or that month, or this month? And, you know, is there sufficient, or sufficient documentation supporting that, okay, this was an authorized expenditure? And the amount that was due was paid, that this was a legitimate receipt for a tax or a use, you know, water sewer, or for whatever the source is, did it go into the right fund? And was it deposited correctly? And have the, the bank accounts been reconciled by the end of the year to make sure that, you know, everything's in the right spot? So, I guess I'm rambling, I don't mean to ramble on, but it's, there's a lot of moving pieces. But by putting all this stuff together, we, we get to what the financial statements are. And the, the main financial statements in the front of the, right after the audit opinion, show the state, there's, there's a statement of financial position or net position, which is basically the assets and liabilities of everything in the city all combined together to show you what the net position is. And you've, you've got a positive net position, of course. And then there's a statement of activities. It's basically all of revenues and the result of the expenditures combined in one spot. And it's split between, it's narrowed down even more between governmental activities and enterprise activities. The reader can see, okay, what's, what's being generated and what, what is the net, the net equity at the end of the year of these funds? So the, the way the financial statements are organized is, the first part of it is the opinion on, on these statements. And as I said, the opinion is basically the report card. How we come up with this opinion that says these financial statements are fairly stated is by testing and the gathering of evidence. We look, we look to outsiders, okay, is this really the bank account bank? Is this really the debt bond holder? Do these assets really exist? Are there things that, that support the timing of these transactions and all of that stuff? So that's, that's evidence we gather. Again, where it comes from is the responsibility of management, the accounting for it. And so we talk about that in our audit report. We talk about, okay, has management considered, are they going to be a going concern for at least one year? Of course, fortunately, the city is going to keep going. And are they, are they, you know, are they in compliance with all laws and regulations? So all that is part of our audit opinion that says these financial statements are fairly stated. So fairly stated means the amounts are accurate, they're recorded in the right period, they're described correctly in accordance with general accepted accounting principles, especially they relate to governance. And that the financial statements are complete. As well as, besides the numbers, you know, the balance sheets, the assets, liabilities, expenditures, revenues, are the narrative that follow it, what we call the notes to the financial statements, are they complete? Do they tell the financial story of the city, the accounting principles that are used, the peculiarities of capital assets, or how the budget year, how cash is accounted for, receivables, how they're valued? How they, how this pension liability, what, where all the components of that, there's a big long footnote on that. What do transfers, kind of a little detail of transfers between all these funds? Or if there's intercom, interfund borrowings that are either due or have been repaid back during the year? So there's, there's a note for each one of these kind of things. Oh, as well as the activity between the debt, you know, you have your beginning debt, the principal payments you made. In this case, you've got some new debt, some old debt paid off, and what the ending balances are. As well as a, a preview, if you will, of how much principal payments and interest payments are due in the next five years and then all through the, every five-year period, the life of each debt instrument. Any questions?
I think you hit the nail on the head.
Okay. I try to, yeah, I guess we have a little bit more time, but I don't want to, you may have other things you want to talk about. I want to give you time for questions, too. So I try, I try to condense this stuff a little bit. And so forgive me if I'm, if I'm going too fast. I want to make sure I answer your questions. And throughout, not just at audit time, but throughout the year, I encourage my clients and certainly Spencer and Zach will contact me if they've got questions, they want to bounce something off of me. But I'm available to you also. If you've got a concern or something of a financial nature or something that may impact the city's financial statements, you can certainly contact me directly. At audit time, I'm going to ask one of you some questions. Usually it's, of course. So there's, there should be that two-way communication, not just at audit, but throughout the year if you have a question. And, and I encourage them, always take advantage of that.
I'm probably the only one that read every word all the way through.
Do we have any typos?
No.
How many nights of insomnia did it take?
No, it, I'm, I'm used to reading these.
I think that's his pleasure.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
I was, I was very pleased, you know. I wouldn't say I was worried. I wouldn't say I was really concerned, but I knew this was going to be a harder audit than in the past. We had all brand-new people doing it, not just here at the department head level, but within the staff.
Oh, within the staff.
Yeah. So seeing, you know, just the one thing about internal controls and, and then stating that here's the things that we, for lack of a better word, fixed, saying our statements are okay. And you'll see, I'm assuming this is the way it works, you'll see these numbers as the beginning balances when the budget comes out in a week or two. So, you know, all these things flow into that and you start with a fresh number every year. But, you know, I was, I was thrilled to see that, you know, there's, there's no big issues here. You did see probably the one spot where he said we had to spend more money. And I was actually, you close your ears. I was actually pleased it wasn't more than that. And, you know, we'll, we'll work on how much the audit costs will be going in the future. And, you know, Spencer will let us know what that is. So overall, you know, I think we're in really great shape still. And we're looking forward to the future, what we have. We're, we are in really good shape. And we will see what the next budget there brings.
Yeah. Yeah, the city is in sound financial condition, position based on, you know, what we've looked at. I guess there's two other things I'd like to add. I don't want to take away from the predecessors. You know, audits in the past have gone, have gone well and the city's been very accountable and transparent. They used a system that they've used a long time, a long time used in this software. And when you have a changeover, a lot, you know, a lot of staff all at once, and they used a different, different types of software procedures, you know, it can be a little daunting. So I, I think the ability that they, you know, Zach and his staff was able to kind of, you know, okay, figure out how to work things, you know, how do we keep processing transactions to make sure they're getting in the right spots? You know, like I said, there was a learning curve, but, you know, I'm, I'm confident in their abilities and their, certainly their professionalism and their, you know, their ethical behavior, too. You know, that's one thing, you know, auditors always, that's what keeps me up, okay. They're telling me the truth and stuff, the things match. And they do, things match up. The other point I wanted to make was that, I guess I made both points, the city is in good financial condition. To take away from, from, from past audits, going forward, I think it's fine. Oh, there is one more thing. So the, and Spencer, Zach and I were kind of talking about this, we've been talking about it. The city has received, you know, some grant money from the, oh, you have it in the American Rescue Fund. Okay, so, you know, there's, there's a timeline when you have to use that. And I, I think you come up to a decision, or you will be making decisions how to spend that pretty soon. That does, because it's federal money, okay, and the level of it, it does kick in what's called a single audit in the year that you spend it. And, and it's, and that, that limit is seven hundred and fifty thousand. So if you have expenditures of seven hundred and fifty thousand or more from federal funds, and that's from all sources of federal funds, so you just spent seven hundred of it in one year, but the police department has a sixty thousand dollar, you know, safety grant, well, now you've got seven sixty. That kicks in a single audit. So those other little federal funds you got to consider, too. But I think you're going to probably spend most of it all at once anyway. And that, that does increase the audit time a little bit and, you know, it costs about, I don't know, six or seven thousand dollars.
Yeah. And, and to his credit, he did call me in, what, probably March and say, hey, if you can get this out of the door before June, you should do that.
Try to get some of it done, yeah.
You know, he did give me, I told him that wouldn't be possible, but he did try to save us some money.
It may, it may be possible.
Well, before last June.
Oh.
Yeah.
Shooting for this June.
I remember telling Mark when it, when you were, I think when he first told me it was coming in, I said, okay, you're going to get a hundred, a million and a half of federal dollars. If you can, and you have three years to spend it, just spend five hundred a year, you'll be under the radar.
Right. Also, it's on what you spend, not what you receive.
Not when you see it. And then, and when, the thing is, you had the, you got the money in and that's reflected in here. It's not, we don't classify it as like deferred revenue because the money was available. And I think there was a budget for it. It's just, you know, all the moving pieces didn't, didn't line up. The stars have to line up. You have to spend it on certain things. And there's a variety of things you can use it for, but you want to make sure you use it prudently. And, you know, management, and you've always guided the city pretty well in those types of things, so I'm not concerned about that. It won't be that hard, a single audit for me. I do enough single audits, too.
Randy? Anything?
Could you hear me?
You've been through a lot of these.
Yeah. Well, I was glad to hear that the transition wasn't all that terrible because there, there's always a concern. And I got a little concerned when I saw the, the requirements for, for the employee retirement fund, you know, because that, that's a big hit there. And hopefully that was a, an act to get us caught up and we don't see those kind of percentages in the future. But I know Zach and Spencer have worked really hard to pull this together and get us back on track. And I, I see a lot of time spent doing that. And going forward, I think it'll be much easier.
Yeah. And we talked, too, about, there's probably some, there's multiple funds that are like, that are similar. And if they can be, if you can consolidate those, that fund accounting, it'll make the processes a little bit easier and certainly more efficient, so. And you're allowed, you know, it's not that there's an Oregon requirement that you have to have a fund for every, you know, revenue source that you have. You can have a, a generic fund, you know, to, that, that accounts for, you know, multiple sources of revenue. You know, if there's special revenue or other special capital projects, you just account for them within that fund. So you have one fund you're budgeting for, but you can identify, still identify the projects it's for. You know, it's really key track of it. But then it gets down to the report, it makes the report a little bit, a little bit less.
As a bit of a frame of reference, we've got, I want to say it's forty-three, forty-five funds, somewhere in that ballpark. When I was in Denver, I had a half a billion dollar budget and I had three funds.
Wow.
So if that, if that's any indication that we've gone a little overboard, then. So anyways, all of that is to say, it is on my radar. It likely won't, well, it will not happen this year. But it's on my radar to boil that down considerably with your approval, of course, and, and make the, not that it'll be simplistic, but it'll be far less complex of a budget to put together and to keep your arms around.
So will you do that at the same time as when you're putting together the new accounting system?
That was kind of, that, that's a thought because it would be nice to, to have some extra hands to help with that. It's just a conversation with them. Because the last thing you want to do is, is institute a new system, institute a new accounting procedure at the same time you're instituting a new accounting software.
You have to run parallels.
Right. You have to, you have to make sure that it's running correctly and that, you know, the plane gets off the ground, so to speak, before you just crash it into, into the water. And so if they're confident that something like that can be done, then it's a, it's a thought, but I think it's probably unlikely. I mean, it would be really nice to have the additional labor, but we've got to have the confidence that it's running correctly, too, so.
I can see you getting down to about a dozen funds, fund types, between the, between the enterprise and the governmental ones.
Yeah, I mean, there's, what, water sewer, convention center, there's three off the path that we can't combine, so.
There's, and for the financial statements, we already combined some of those. Kind of the same with the capital projects and special revenue funds. There's, there's eight or ten funds in each one of those groups, subgroups, or more.
Right.
And.
The nine-one-one special revenue fund can't be combined with anything. At least it couldn't in Colorado. I don't know that it can here, but I would suspect that it can't be.
So, but there's, and there's resources for you to find out which ones can, which ones can't.
Have you done this for other communities in Oregon?
I have.
And do you know from there, your experience, what you might encounter doing it for Seaside? And do you know from there, you experienced what you might encounter doing it for Seaside?
As far as the number of funds and trimming them down or just in general?
Encounter any special troubles?
Oh.
Things like that?
Yeah. Yeah, the, usually it's, the trouble we, that I would encounter most often would be if there's a, a lack of controls or not very good segregation duties. And then you, you get into the accountability issues of, okay, are you reconciling your bank statement every month? Do you have, do you have the right documentation to support why you made these expenditures? Or in the case of the federal funds, usually that's another area where there's, they have specific requirements, what you're allowed to spend the money on and how much time you have to spend it. And for, you know, if you're, if you're also dispersing it to another agency, or that becomes a sub-recipient of the money you got, you have to monitor that other agency as well. So those are the types of problems you run into with, with those, those types of things. Right now, the city's, this is the only city I have. At one point I had three or four cities in a county. And now we kind of are, I don't know, just the way that it, it's rolled, we, we sell this city and we have three port districts. And then I have a, it's a, basically a government agency, it's a professional liability fund of the state bar of Oregon. So it's not the state bars, they have like their own insurance for lawyers, and it's called a professional liability fund. And then there's a, we have a number of charter schools. And the charter schools are interesting because they're formed as nonprofit organizations, but they have to function under an existing sponsoring school district. So they're subject to the same type of reporting and accounting that the city or the port district or, or that school district would, would be under. So that's, that's kind of a fun thing to do. You have two sets of standards you kind of have to look at, but the reporting comes down this way. And it's, it's the same kind of thing that, you know, auditors are always concerned about. What's, what's the risk in these financial statements that they're not going to be, that we're going to make a mistake and not, and report on something that doesn't exist? Or report that, okay, these financial statements are fairly stated when in fact, there really is no value in the receivables or the investments? Or the, the pension liability is way understated? It's a lot more than you think. So those risks, that's what the auditor has to look at, okay. What's, what's the outside risk that something's going to go bad? Is, is the, is the capability and competence of the, of the people that, that account for the transactions, you know, does that, does that provide some comfort? And in this case, it does, you've got well-educated, experienced professionals, the, the staff are pretty well-trained. You know, the, the accounting system, you know, the, the, the software is one thing, but the processes to get the numbers in and out of that is another thing. And those processes are pretty well-defined. And there's, there's checks and balances in each of those spots. So that, that provides assurance for us. Then just testing those controls, okay, you say you do it this way, are you really doing it that way? That's why we test these transactions, we're testing the flow there. Okay, if it works for a number of things, a number of types of transactions, and it works in multiple funds, okay, that gives us assurance it's going to work everywhere else. Then we can go and test the balances. Okay, does this balance really exist? Are these still all your assets? Are we depreciating them correctly? These are your cash balances, did you reconcile to the bank? Can we see that bank statement in the subsequent bank statements to see, okay, if you said something was an outstanding transaction at the end of the year, did it clear later on? If you say this is the balance of the debt that you have, does that outside bond holding your note, note holder, like Zion's Bank or US Bank, did they agree that this is what we paid out and this is what the balance is still owing on there? So we, it, it gets back to, okay, now we can prove all this stuff out. And the rest of it is, okay, now, the, all the auditing standards say we have to disclose all these things. Do we write, do we write it up the right way to indicate, okay, this is how you account for debt and how you account for cash? This is what the actuary gave us for all the numbers, so this is what it's going to be. And that's, those, those types of things, we're managing the risk that we're, we're capturing everything, that management is capturing everything, that we can attest that they've captured it correctly in, in the numbers. That's probably a long answer to your question. No, you're welcome.
Okay. This will be on our agenda tonight. You going to come up and just say, here's the audit?
Just say that I performed the audit.
A few words. And then our, our motion is in the paperwork. We're not approving it. We cannot approve this because that's why we hire him and his company. We are just accepting it officially. And I assume after we accept it officially, it'll be on, like on the website, available to the public. So anybody ever looks at it.
Well, I'm sure some people will.
Yeah, when you, your, your debt, your bond holders will look at this.
Oh, yeah, it goes to, I don't know how long the list you have. I know my list was, you know, like a hundred different entities wanted to see it. Yeah, it was quite my, my life. It was so nice when you could just send them a PDF copy.
Yeah. Save a few trees at times.
We got way down on printing cost.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you, Rick.
Well, thank you very much, Sue.
Did a good job? We have a few minutes, if anybody wants to bring something else up, otherwise we'll start at six o'clock.